The time is now seven o'clock. And I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Demme?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Rasag?
Here.
Mr. Karubis?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Mr. Karubis, will you lead us in the pledge?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's unusual, but we don't have board salutes today, so we're going right to our student representative report, which will be given by Shivant Gupta. Shivant is here. I saw him. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Just in case you forgot, my name is Shivant Gupta, and I'm Niqua's school board representative. Today, we're going to be diving into your Niqua update. First off, I'd like to applaud our football team for finishing up a great season and for playing through the second round of the playoffs. Way to go Wildcats. Winter sports are also on their way. Our students are participating in basketball, wrestling, bowling, boys' women's dive, cheer, and dance. Good luck to girls swimming as they defend their state championship title and new cheer this weekend. We can't wait to see how they do. During the end of October, Niqua had a Serenity Week to raise awareness regarding mental health issues. Each day of Serenity Week promoted an important life skill relating to, related to improving our mental health. On October thirtieth, Niqua held its annual Halloween-themed Spooktacular concerts. Great job to the Niqua Valley Music Department for all the hard work they put into housing this concert. On October, on November sixth, twelve Niqua students also signed to play their sports at the college level. I want to say congratulations to these Wildcats as they take a step into their future. Niqua also held their Veterans Day ceremony and commemorated the thirtieth anniversary of the fall of the Berlin Wall. Those who served our country will not be forgotten. Niqua Theater, along with writer and director, Mr. Schaub, hosted the annual fall play, Things Not to Do, this past weekend. Shout out to all the Wildcats who put in their time practicing and working to set this amazing performance. Niqua also welcomed Mary Beth Tinker, an activist who wore a black armband as a high school junior to process the Vietnam War. Tinker's case was crucial in defining our First Amendment. We will also be having parent-teacher conferences on the twenty-first and the twenty-fifth of this month. And this Friday, we will be celebrating Niqua's high achievers and awardees in the red carpet rally. The Niqua Music Department will also be kicking out the holiday season with their annual Crystal Concerts on December fifth and December sixth. Ticket sales will open up to the public by the twenty-fifth of this month. And that's all we have for today. Thank you so much for giving me your time, and I hope you have a great rest of your evening.
Thanks, Shivant. No one, no one has signed up for public comment, and so we move to the consent agenda and superintendent report. We always begin with Dr. Sullivan.
Well, as mentioned, parent-teacher conferences are upon us, with conferences starting this Thursday evening, and then again all day and evening next Monday. And while I know that most of our families have already signed up for their conference slot, we encourage anyone who hasn't secured a slot to work with their child's teachers to do so as soon as possible. This upcoming weekend is the annual joint conference where school board members, school business officials, and school superintendents gather for professional development. And this year, our very own Indian Prairie School Board will be presenting a session on Saturday entitled, "Is Your Board Working as a Team? Try Governance?" So all school board members will be attending this important professional development opportunity. The Illinois School Board Association also holds its delegate assembly at the conference. Mark Rising will once again serve as our board representative at the delegate assembly and be the one casting the board's votes for IASB resolutions and belief statements. And I think the delegate assembly will be lively again this year, don't you, Mark?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, we can't wait to hear about it. And finally, on a festive note, I hope all of you have an opportunity to attend one or more of our high school concerts the first weekend of December: the Crystal at Niqua, the Prism at Wabonzi, and Collage at Matia. These certainly will put you in the spirit of the season, so get your tickets now if you hope to get a seat to see the amazing talent in this district. We want to give a huge shout out to our music educators, who really worked tirelessly to pull these concerts together so professionally, and for IPEF, for their continued support of the arts in our district. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. We go to consent agenda items. I need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items D through G as presented.
Make a motion to the Board of Education, approve Consent Agenda Items D through G as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Karubis?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rasag?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Motion passes. We now go to our first and only action item, and that's the approval of the tentative two thousand nineteen tax levy. I need a motion to approve the tentative tax levy.
I move for approval of the tentative two thousand nineteen tax levy as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Mr. Strain.
Good evening, board members. As we do every time this year, it's time for the tentative levy. As you're aware, this is the first step in the process that will ultimately extend our taxes and support the district for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. The Illinois School Code gives the authority to boards of education to levy taxes on real property within the district to support its public schools. This is an annual process that must occur before the end of December. The Truth in Taxation Law provides the tentative levy, if it exceeds one hundred and five percent of the previous year's extension, a public notice and hearing are needed before official levy can be adopted. Since our levy request this year represents less than five percent, we are not subject to the Truth in Taxation Law for this year. Having said that, we still intend to follow the process to be transparent. Therefore, twenty days prior to the adoption of a levy resolution, the school board must estimate and announce the tentative levy for the amounts of money that they deem necessary to be raised for property taxation. It is this tentative levy that we're asking the board to consider tonight. We are recommending that the board set a tentative levy in the amount of three hundred and ten million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars, which includes our bond and interest levy. While this represents a four point one percent increase over two thousand eighteen's levy extension, the district is subject to the tax cap legislation, and we will not receive that four point one percent increase. Depending on the amount of new property, the district should experience an increase of approximately three point six eight percent in the final extension. It's important to note that the levy calls for a bond and interest levy in the amount of twenty-seven million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. The estimated ending bond and interest levy is in accordance with the bond debt structure plan that was enacted more than a decade ago. Over the past twenty-eight years, the property tax cap has faithfully limited property tax increases in the amount in the collar counties to that of CPI, and it continues to do so. The Consumer Price Index used for this tax cap levy year is one point nine percent. The district, therefore, will receive one point nine percent increase plus the amount of new growth in the district. With the tax cap, CPI has become the critical factor, not the tax rate. The rate is simply lowered or raised by the formula obtained by the CPI cap. Tax rates this year will drop as property values have increased in both Will and DuPage County. DuPage County EAVs have increased by four point zero nine percent, and Will County EAVs have increased by three point three five percent. For the two thousand nineteen taxes, the average homeowner should experience a one point nine percent increase in taxes paid to District 204, the same amount as the Consumer Price Index. The levy is set in an amount that ensures the district will be able to access property tax revenues from new property, property that is just coming online and being constructed. This levy is based on the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one budget forecast. Current projections for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one suggest increased needs in capital improvement, implementations of evidence-based funding, and continue to work on our safety and security. The estimated increase in property taxes proceeds for District 204 is ten million dollars, of which four point eight million dollars comes from new property. Although we are not subject to the Truth in Taxation Law this year, we are still intending to follow the process and hold a public hearing and a final adoption by the Board of Education. The hearing will occur at the beginning of the December ninth board meeting. Later in that agenda, we'll ask the board for final approval. I'll be happy to take questions, but at this time, the board, the administration recommends that the Board of Education adopt a two thousand and nineteen tentative levy as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Strain. Comments? Questions? Mr. Rising?
Well, I think Bear is mentioning that there's been recent talk about tax levies, and I just wanted to state for the record that, from the state's point of view, we receive close to eighty percent of our funding from local sources. And the state has recognized that as a district, we are only at about seventy-nine percent of adequate funding, which equates to about seventy-nine million dollars short in our budget, due to how we should be operating at a hundred percent. So, you know, I don't think any of us necessarily like to ask for money from our taxpayers, but there is a system that's been put in place. And, you know, this is, this is something that I feel as a district, and to be fiscally responsible as a district, something that we need to do. So, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Others? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll.
Ms. Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Karubis?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rasag?
Aye. Motion passes. For those who, students who chose today's meeting, we usually go to nine o'clock. This is, this is something else today. You picked a good meeting. We have an important presentation.
Yes, we do.
And I'm glad we have time to have this presentation. It's the district equity update. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, board. We're very excited to be here tonight to talk to you about building a culture of equity and action. With me tonight is Doug Ikarius, the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, and we're excited to have Jennifer Rowe, the Executive Director of Equity, for her first board meeting presentation tonight. So, we're excited for that. This directly connects to Board Policy five-ten and seven-ten, which both deal with equal employment opportunities as well as equal educational opportunities. And I think you'll see that woven throughout our presentation this evening. Just, in the past, we've given presentations and we've talked about how we've aligned our equity activities. And previously, under the tutelage of Yvette Dubiel, which we thank very much for her help and support as we started this process, we looked at activities under leadership, professional learning, teaching and learning, and community engagement. As we worked through some of the higher-level activities of giving everyone similar professional learning and things like that, that really worked for us. As we move forward, we looked at it in a different way, and we felt like we needed to get into more detailed activities. And so you'll see in this presentation that we've aligned our activities to the board or district goals. And so that's a little bit of a shift for us. The other thing is, there's a ton of work going on tonight. We've chosen some things to highlight and bring to the forefront, but there's, our presentation tonight represents a lot of great work being done by a lot of great people, committed to helping our students. So with that being said, we'll get right to it.
Good evening. One of the things coming into this position was the belief in truly being boots on the ground, connecting with people, and building those relationships in that capacity to do this ongoing work, because it's not anything that's going to come to an end. It's just the way that we have to do business. And meeting with this team here, our conversations with DELT was, how are we creating that equity-centered culture? And that really involves creating a team that's able to collaborate. And so the key points that I wanted to point out is, the focus has been on how are we building those relationships, truly establishing a coalition, which includes our community members, our teachers, our leaders, and the young people in our community. And a big thing that we've been talking so much about is the achievement gap. And we know that that exists, but we also know that we need to create those opportunities, because there are opportunity gaps that our children experience. And we want to make sure that we're supporting everyone to do the work and to make sure that we build that capacity over time.
And as we talked about before, equity should and is woven in everything we do. The three district or board goals that we're going to reference tonight are, help students to grow socially, emotionally, and academically, to hire and retain high-quality, effective teachers, school leaders, and support staff, and to be student and community-focused.
And with that, our three teams were really focusing on that collaborative process, making sure that our administrative leaders have that opportunity to work together and to bring that information back to their buildings. On this slide, you can see kind of an overview of many of the activities that are focused on those three board goals. And we're going to have time to talk about some of that work in the next slides.
So our first one is help students grow socially, emotionally, and academically. And, you know, the portrait of a graduate is kind of our guiding post at this point. And all that we do, we want every student to be able to acquire the competencies listed, as well as the knowledge gained throughout that, as we've decided through our Portrait of a Graduate work. So I think you'll see that referenced as we talk about what are the activities that we want to highlight under this. You know, our purpose behind this is to really look at what barriers exist when we look at equity, and to be able to remove those barriers, whether they be socioeconomic or funding, whether they be transportation, experience, exposure to opportunities, as well as, you know, a sense of belonging. So as we looked at some of the activities that are here, we looked at what are some of the barriers that students might have for any variety of reasons, and referenced back to the Board Policy seven-ten about providing that equal educational opportunity in both education and extracurriculars. So we're going to highlight some of the activities that are happening now.
When I first got into this position, I started reaching out to many of our other supporters in the community. And one of those would have been Clayton Mohammed, who works with Boys to Men. And with that conversation, he decided, hey, let's try something new. And I was able to reach out to the leadership team over at Fisher. And with that meeting together, again, bringing the school and the community into one place, we decided the best thing that we could do is bring Boys to Men Junior to the school, in contrast to that being something out into the, in the community. They have Boys to Men, which is for older young men, and then Boys to Men Junior, which is for fifth to eighth graders. But oftentimes, another barrier for our children is being able to get to the activities. And so with our conversations, we decided, let's try something by creating a chapter actually on the campus. And last week was wonderful, because Mayor Urban was able to come by to their meeting. They meet once a month during their lunch period, and again, they have the program coming into the school with the students. So that, so far, has been a great success. And again, I love how they're also including our literacy component in that as well. A couple of the other programs that we're doing is looking at our high school students and creating an opportunity for me to go in and meet with them, to allow me to have a pulse on what is going on in each of the buildings, looking at equity. And during the Wednesday times each week, I'm able to go into the tribe time at Wabonzi and meet with the students. So I have a group at Wabonzi, Niqua, and also at Matia. We were talking earlier about building capacity, and the Equity Ambassadors has been a small team for me to help get the work done. Right now, I have Ms. Christina Jakubis from Niqua, and she's been more of our expert dealing with LGBTQ+ work that we're doing. We also have Dr. Rachel Mahmood, who looks at culturally responsive teaching workshops, and also Ms. Charminique Joyner. I also have Javier Polivieja, and he is focusing in on our SEL and also our Latinx needs in our community.
So our concentration for this year is to provide more opportunities for rigorous coursework and greater access to more diverse texts for our students. I do want to say that, you know, some of the activities that we've shared with you before, like our Title One preschool, those things are still going. So we're not going to rehash all the things that we're still doing from before, but just want to highlight some things that are new to us in the, in this year. So one of the things that we had was Tyler Howard, Tyrone Howard came in and did workshops. He spent a day with us, and we had representatives from our schools, teachers, and administrators. And then he spent the evening with our PEDAC group. He actually stayed an hour later with the parent group in the evening, and was just very powerful and very conversational about culture and race and its importance within our schools. And we'll do some follow-up activities with him as well. You know, you've supported the Equal Opportunity Schools work that Dr. Lee has led over the last few years to look at our high school enrollment in AP and honors courses. And so what we, you know, when we first started this, we asked equal opportunity schools, yeah, but what about elementary and middle? Like, how do we find students that could benefit there? So they said, just be patient. You'll learn. And so we were able to have a workshop about a week ago, and our high school principal, Stip, Principal Fuhrer, Don Pancook, Department Chair, Dave Perry, high school representatives, a couple of guidance counselors came in and talked to our lower level, our elementary and middle school teachers and administrators about what they learned from equal opportunity schools. What are some of the characteristics that aren't just a test score, and helping to see if a student is, would benefit from more rigorous coursework? And so that was a really great conversation that will continue throughout the year, just an entry point into looking at how we identify students for Math Acceleration, Project Arrow, and some of those areas. One of the things that rang loud and clear from our high school folks was, the earlier students can have access to that, the better. And so that's one thing we wanted to take a look at. You were part of discussions about the math courses and the transition, especially to COD. We did some work. Mike Purcell did a lot of great work with our department chairs at all three high schools, as well as some teachers, to develop a course in partnership and collaboration with some other DuPage County schools, but also the College of DuPage. We did the first year pilot. We're in our second year of piloting that. Just on the aside, two hundred and eighty-seven of our students took the course last year, and out of that, two hundred and seventy-six of them qualified to take credit-bearing math courses at the College of DuPage for the next year. So we're looking at that as very successful, and so that work continues, and Mike continues to advocate for that at the, at College of DuPage and at other, within the county. And as Jennifer talked about, we have two teachers who are very well-versed in cultural, culturally responsive teaching. They've developed a great workshop. We held, I say we, but they did it, our first workshop last week, and got some great feedback from teachers about how valuable it was, so we'll continue to do that. The idea behind that is to tap some teachers within some of our schools, give them some of the teaching, some of the resources, and then they can go back to their school and talk to other teachers within their building. So building that capacity across the district. And then we're very excited about our diverse text and access work. Tara Fowler and Jessica Walsh did some great work last year with our middle schools to look at some of their book club offerings for students. And they worked with our ELA committees, a big group of teachers who were very committed to that, who did a lot of research, created some lists, and then read a ton of books to find out if they would be appropriate for our students to choose. And so we've been implementing some, we bought them, and they've been implementing that. They've done some work on how to talk to students about choosing text and engage them in that. And so right now, we've gotten some good feedback from that. We've carried that up a little bit into high school with some strategic reading courses, I'm sorry, Lit Strategies courses at the high school. Mike's working with them. And we'll continue that work, both moving forward in the high school English courses, and also looking at some of our anchor texts at the elementary level. And part of that has been looking at our library collections, our LMC collections, and looking at the age of those collections, and when is the last time we've updated them. So through our volume reading committee work, we have, we're working this year to update our LMC collections across the district. So we've given some funding to them, and the charge of looking for more engaging, more up-to-date, more diverse texts for our students, both in looking at authors as well as characters within, as well as subject matter that appeals to our students. So they're very excited. Our LMC directors are very excited about that, and they are partnering together to get bargains, so that they can make the most out of that funding to help support our students. So we're very excited about this work. Brian Giovinelli's working with our LMC directors on that. But these are just a few of the highlights of the things that we're doing to provide more opportunities and greater access for our
The next board, district goal that we're focusing on with our DELT team is hire and retain high-quality, effective teachers, school leaders, and support staff. Really, once again, we're trying to look at what barriers might be in place that maybe could potentially prevent us from ensuring that we're providing an equal employment opportunities for all, regardless of race, religion, sex, age, national origin, or ancestry, genetic information, disability, status as a veteran, marital status, parental status, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. We're really trying to see, looking at our processes, you probably remember, I was pretty excited doing the annual high report, that we were going to really get to be hands-on, looking at our processes and procedures, and seeing what do we need to put in place, or what needs to be removed that in any way could impact those equal employment opportunities.
And one of the other pieces is, how are we retaining all of our staff, but in particular, our leaders and teachers of color? So one of the pieces that we've been focused on right now is creating affinity groups and opportunities. Right now, I've been working with our leaders, and we've been meeting every other month. We actually are going for an event at Lewis University for other teachers of color across the region on Friday. Doug's going to come as well. So we've enjoyed being able to support each other, creating a network, and also making sure that we're supporting new leaders of color that have come in. So we've had several folks that joined our team, and that was a great way for all of us, just to get together and connect, with that, again, reaching out to the community, having mentors in our community to come in and speak with us as well. So our first gathering that we had, we had Cynthia Latimer, who's on the State Board of Education. She was able to come in and meet with all of us, and is continuing to work with us and support us in our journey.
Another thing that we're doing is just looking at our new hires in the district, and really trying to change our focus there, so that as soon as we hire people, we're really starting, you know, trying to see, how can we maintain relationships with them? How can we improve our onboarding processes? How can we stay connected? We are noticing that as we try to get out earlier to do our hiring, we could hire people in January, February, and they're not going to start working with us until July and August. And so we found that we need to make sure we're really that we need to make sure we're really working hard to stay connected with those new educators, whether it's weekly check-ins or at least once a month checking with them, making sure that they feel like they're part of our district. A lot of districts are experiencing where you're putting an offer, people accept an offer in March, and then in June, you hear, "Oh, I found a different place that I want to go and work at." And so we're trying to make sure that we're staying connected, that we're building those relationships, and that we're providing support. And then how do we continue to provide support? What kind of mentoring do we do along the way? And so we have to make sure that we're providing those supports, that we stay connected. And in addition to that, Jen's been focusing on how does she support some of our new educators of color as well?
One of the pieces that we've talked about is just overall, how we need to do a better job of working with teachers, supporting them. And right now, again, it's been more of like, what can I pilot right now? And we can roll that out in a greater fashion next year. That's the goal. So when I came on, I looked at how many new black teachers did we have, and we had about four young ladies. And so one of the things was, how could I make a personal connection with them, with some extra relationship time with them? And so I was able to speak with them at orientation. They responded, "Yes, I would like to connect." And it was interesting as well, after that initial outreach, I found that some of our other teachers who'd been in the district longer, they might be the only teacher of color in their elementary building, for example, and then they wanted to participate. So it's been, again, a journey for me, just seeing, having one idea and how other people want to get together. And with that, we know other teachers as well. You can create other affinity groups, and that's part of the work that we're looking at in our Delt work, is you can look at this group, but how can we replicate that to meet the needs of other communities as well? So right now, we've had opportunities to meet for lunch. So usually, I'm sending them messages, popping over to their buildings. We've had times that we've been able to go out together. And again, just that support and feedback. I think it's great to know that someone else is there that you can send a message to if you have a question and that they're, that they are there to support you. So that's where we've started. And again, it's, it kind of has started with those handful of new, of teachers, and it's kind of moved out into a larger group of teachers of color who have the desire to connect with folks that are like them.
Another area we've been focusing on is building relationships with colleges and universities and expanding on those relationships. We're really trying to work with them on how can we continue to encourage more students to go into education, and how can we work with them on that process? Is there ways that we can work with them to make things more affordable, or how can we ensure that we're getting student teachers from these universities? And so we've really tried to do a lot in connecting with different universities, seeing what kind of discounts can be put in place. We're going over to Aurora University tomorrow morning to just present to the pre-service students there, the secondary pre-service students, to let them know about our district and why we'd be interested in them. We still continue to try to go to many career fairs. We're doing that both in the fall and the spring. We've talked a lot about the teacher shortage, and it's not getting any better. Since the annual hiring report, our new report came out about unfilled positions in the state, and it doubled of what we saw last year. And actually, for administrators, I think it close, it tripled or quadrupled about the number of unfilled in there. So we're seeing across the board that it's only getting worse. And so we've got to make sure, how do we get those teachers wanting to come to 204? You might have recently seen that we also started a new Twitter handle called TeachIn24. It's increasing followers quickly. We're also trying to make sure that we're highlighting our profession. How do we highlight education through that so people can see the great things going on in this district? Also, to let them know when we're going to post positions, you might have seen on there, as well as that when we're going out to recruitment fairs, to stop by and interact with us. So we're really trying to make sure that we get a step ahead to get the college students to be interested in our school district. Another thing that we're trying to focus on is how do we have that equity-driven hiring process? And this is really, once again, going back to the heart of, how do we make sure that every, you know, everybody has an equal opportunity to work in our school district? So some of the things is looking at, what guidelines do we have in place for when we're screening applications? Do we look for teachers who have experience working with diverse students? Do we, or are we only focused on, were they at this type of school district before that? But really trying to see, what processes and procedures do we have in place when we're just even reviewing those applications? Or as I had talked about before, we're doing some things with using video screening. What rubrics do we have in place so that we're consistent on screening those so that we have a fair and equitable process for anybody who applies in the district? And then we have to look at the interviews themselves. What kind of questions are we asking? Are we asking questions that might not be appropriate to ask for any group to be asking those types of questions? We try to do training on that. We also want to look at, what is the makeup of our committee when we're doing the interviews? Is our committee diverse? What message are we sending when we're doing our interviews by what the representation is? And then we have to look at our selection. I think especially now, trying to look at how we're selecting people and what did our pool like? As we talk about teacher shortages, as I've said before, even when we look at how many teachers are coming out to Teach in Illinois, we really don't identify by what area. It doesn't let us know how many people are coming out who are going to be able to teach math at the high school, or who can teach science at the high school. So trying to gather that data and analyze that data, what did our pool of candidates look like for this position? Did we only have 24 people apply? Did we have 120 apply? Did we have six apply? And really looking at that information, analyzing that information, and seeing what do we need to do to get out in front of this when we know either people are retiring from this group, or, you know, that we just know that this is an area that might have some potential turnover, and how are we going to compete for those people? And then making sure that we're looking at what training is needed to make sure that our processes are free of bias. What can we do in those situations to make sure that we have a fair and equitable process? And finally, we're doing a student-teacher outreach, really this year. It does go back to our university partnerships and identifying, trying to identify any obstacles in our processes to place student teachers. A lot of time, you know, sometimes hosting a student-teacher can be quite a bit of work, and so, but we know we need student teachers. That's only going to help our recruitment for teachers moving forward. And so we have to see what obstacles are in place there. We're also doing this year, it'll be our first-ever student-teacher open house. So we sent out an invite to all of our student teachers. We also said that they could bring a friend, if they have a friend who's student teaching in another district, and that we would just kind of network with them and offer to look at their resume or set up some mock interviews, but really just to connect with them. When student teachers hear that there's going to be a bunch of principals and district office administrators in the room, they usually want to get in there to connect and interact. And so we're excited about that. We have so far 21 student teachers signed up to come for that. We're going to continue to promote that and let the universities that we work closely with know that student teachers can come and interact with us on that day and just be a support for them, you know? I think it's important for us, for our district and our profession.
One of the biggest things also, just as we get ready to conclude, is how are we building those relationships with the community? A big thing for me is coming in has just been, how am I touching, you know, on all those folks out there? Have had regular meetings right now with the P3 Coalition, so I think they've come up here several times. Obviously, I work with PDEC, the work with the NAACP, the city of Naperville, with Naperville's Neighbors United, continuing to collaborate with many of the aldermen and folks from the city of Aurora. We've also been connecting with some of our religious community and our Aurora Police Department and Unity Partnership. So again, how are we building those relationships to have folks in the community assist us in doing this work? Here's just a few examples of some of the things that we've done. Alderman Hartburns was gracious and helped have an author come in and visit some of our schools with our elementary schools. We had our collaboration with the city of Aurora for the Gandhi 150th Celebration, and then some of our students were able to come and perform with the Ugandan delegation. So just a couple of things that we wanted to highlight that have been going on with the community and our students.
And as we said before, just the three of us, but we're representing many, many other people who are doing some really great work in providing equitable experiences for our students. And with that being said, we'd be happy to take any feedback or answer any of your questions. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Questions? Susan?
First, yeah, I want to just say thank you for sharing some of the great things that you guys are doing and some of the attention that you are giving to this area. I actually have a couple of questions. Can you share a little bit about any of the evidence-based practices that were, that you found have been beneficial to look at doing any of the type of work that we're doing right now?
Are you, so we do have some, we use some evidence-based funding. Are you looking for some of that? So we do have, with the evidence-based funding, we did look at some lower class sizes at our Title I buildings, as well as instructional coaches. And then when we looked at evidence as far as literacy and things like, the research shows that the more kids read, the better readers they become. And so that's why our volume reading committee really looked at access to literature, as well as engaging in diverse text, so that students could find something that interested them, that they saw themselves in, or that they could relate to. And so really looking to increase the volume of reading that our students do, that practice piece of that. And I believe that the culturally responsive teaching workshops, the teachers who are leading those with Jennifer have done some extensive research as far as coursework and graduate courses to gain some access to what works and what are some applicable resources. So I think they have a really strong foundation in what's supportive of culturally responsive teaching. And, you know, as we work through some of those workshops and expanding those, I think you'll see some benefit to those as well.
Okay. And I know one of the things you shared with us were some of the, looking at some of the culturally diverse and diverse reading materials as far as some of our clubs were concerned. And if you could just share a little bit of what we're doing from a curriculum standpoint, that would be...
So, you know, the, a lot of work was done last year with our middle school. It started at eighth grade. Our English Language Arts teachers came to Tara Fowler and said, "You know, you know, some of these books have been around for a long time." And there was maybe one text that every student was reading as they were going through it. So they spent a lot of time doing some research and talking and felt as though they wanted to diversify it by having students have choice. So not every student wants to read the same book and is interested in the same book. However, comprehension strategies can be taught through any text. So they did a lot of research, looked at all kinds of reading lists, and read a lot of the books themselves under the guidance of both Tara and Jessica Walsh, and chose books to put as book clubs so that, you know, as you're working through a theme, our English Language Arts curriculum is a theme, that there's a variety of books and allowing students to choose, "I want to read this book," and then gathering together with other students who want to read that same book, but still learning the reading strategies that are necessary. So that work, as they started with eighth grade, the other grades were like, "Ah, wait a minute. We'd like to be a part of that, too." And so it expanded, and we've been purchasing the books, and we've been working through some of that and gathering feedback from both students and the teachers about how it's working. And then, you know, Mike Purcell's been working with the English Department, looking at some other text. And then at the elementary level, we started with their classroom libraries because that's the first place that kids are able to find something that might be engaging for them. So we started looking at some of their classroom libraries. But that's work that will continue because, as you know, there are books published every day, and we want kids to engage in them and be avid readers.
And sort of my, and the last question or comment I had, thank you for the affinity groups. I feel that those are going to be so valuable. Can you just share why affinity groups can be, or something that can be so helpful for new teachers coming in?
And, you know, I think we all want to connect with people that have similar beliefs that we have, especially when you might be a little more isolated. Some of our teachers were expressing that, that they are not able to really connect with someone that is coming from the same perspective maybe that they have. And so I think that, again, we want to be supported. We want to feel uplifted. We want to feel heard. And when you have that opportunity to create community, it can be very valuable so that you can go in and do your best with the children that you're working with and also your colleagues. So again, it's just creating another space for people to connect and have community. And I think a lot of people are hungry for that across, you know, wherever community they're from. And our conversation has been, how can we create those pockets for people to get together?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also think that building of that community and that networking helps with retention, which to me, great retention is going to be the biggest or the best thing we can do to address both teacher shortage, and it'll be the best thing for recruitment, is if you can have high retention.
Ms. Beal?
You mentioned about that we have our push bar AP, our students going into AP and dual-credit courses, but you're looking at the lower levels. Could you expand on that a little bit? Now, how would that happen?
Previously, years ago, there was a score on a standardized test, and that was a gatekeeper. So we've talked a great deal in the last, for a while, about how to look at other things. And, you know, it wasn't just about a score. It's about a student who could benefit from it and that they would, maybe just hadn't taken the opportunity yet, hadn't been exposed to some other types of math and those kinds of things. So what we learned from our high school Equal Opportunity Schools work through Dr. Lee and all three of our high schools is what to look for. So what are some of those things that show that a student is ready and could benefit other than a test score? So when you, when they've done the presentations before and you've seen the profile card that looked at some of the perseverance, having a job, wanting to take that course, interested in that course, having a teacher that said, "I think you'd be good at this course." Those are the things that we've shared now at our other levels to help them take a whole picture. There are still assessments that are given. We still don't want to put a student in a spot that they can't be successful, but it's not the one and only piece that determines whether that success is available to them or not.
Are you talking about the gifted program, or are you...
We're talking about both Project Arrow and Math Acceleration.
Okay.
So when we look at Math Acceleration as a second grader, there's some assessments that you take and into third grade, but actually, that's the best time to make that jump because the jump is the smallest. And so really just kind of opening up and providing permission as well as some of the ideas of what to look for for a student who could benefit from that. Because if a student can start at that accelerated coursework in third grade, they're going to benefit from that experience all the way through, instead of trying to make up from a student and be at the same level as a student who's been through the coursework all the way through, but I'm just coming in at eighth grade. It's a much harder jump. So we've just been able to provide them with some ideas. So we've just been able to provide them with, um, some ideas of how to look at the whole picture of a child, not just one test score.
Yeah. I'm just, well, and I'm just thinking, you know, there's kind of like the book choices. Is there a way to make it so that maybe there's an area where they want to move in and that they're interested in, but not necessarily a whole gifted program or?
Right.
A whole Math Acceleration program, or maybe there's a Science Acceleration program or something.
Mm-hmm. There's a lot of possibilities, um, but at this point, we're really just looking at how do we, how do we help?
Right.
Uh, look at students and then, you know, there may be some things that happen and change along the way, uh, based on this, but this is, this was our, this was a really good conversation starter.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Mr. Krubus.
Uh, not a question, but more just a reflection. Um, and really what I enjoyed the most about the work is, um, the use and focus on the opportunity. Um, when we talk about the achievement gap, it's easy to measure, but it's kind of the end product. And so the focus should be on the opportunity. But now, give me a nice slide. It shows the differing opportunity amongst any of us, and you can't do it. So it's hard to quantify any opportunity gap, um, but it exists all around us. And so it's trying different things, seeing if they work. We've got, for example, the affinity groups. Um, it's not something you can just check the box in and say, yep, we've got a group, we're done with that, move on to the next thing. So then we go back to your comment about the relationships, the touch, the, you know, seeing how it goes. Um, and so I think the, the opportunity is the important part of it. Will you know with any degree of scientific certainty if that opportunity for that teacher individual worked? No. But it's the trying to reach out, trying to fill the gap from an opportunity standpoint. And hopefully that impact ultimately deals with the achievement gap. Um, so that's what I liked. I liked the focus on the opportunity. On a side note, slide 11 and slide 14, are we proposing a new logo for the school district?
That's our teaching 204.
Really?
Yes, that's our teaching 204. Yes.
All right. Learn something new.
Follow us on Twitter.
It's Janet Bullio approved.
Yes. We don't have logos without Janet.
As long as Janet approved it, we're okay.
And I, if I could comment, one of the things too, we've had a lot of graduates that have been coming by and that we've been seeing and having conversations with and the things that they've said to us about their experiences and that they're coming back. Um, so I don't know if we just kind of see those little things, but it's in the long term that outcome and, and it's been wonderful of having specific connections with people. For example, we've been looking, um, at a, a science program that we're working in. How are we touching those kids and getting them engaged with that? And then are they able to follow through as they move through high school? Are they going into AP? So I feel like we have all these amazing individual children that we're creating those opportunities for, and we really see that when, at the end and when they come back. Yeah.
Ms. Donahue?
So thank you for all your work. This is definitely an important area. I, I think a number of us had the opportunity to see Tyrone Howard's, um, speak to the PDAC group, and it was very powerful messages that, um, really reached, um, into a lot of different areas for us to contemplate and consider. Um, I'm thrilled to hear about the Math Transitions class because I know that was a new effort in the last, uh, year and, um, such an important part of success in college. So congrats to the whole team for working that and.
Mike Purcell really did, uh, great work both for us on behalf of our students, but for the whole county.
Yeah. And, um, you know, I, I continue to have this focus on the younger ones, like what can we do for those younger ones? Like the work we did with, uh, at the AP level courses in high school. It's like we need to get the, get into the young grades and young kids and make, make the success happen there too. So thank you.
Mr. Rising.
Um, so I'll, first of all, your presentation, thank you so much for touching on three of the four district goals in your presentation on equity. I greatly appreciate that as a board member. Um, I'll say too, as far as, you know, building on what Justin said too, is, you know, I kind of think of this as a, as a pyramid, right? I mean, you mentioned it yourself, you can, you can always look at a, at a score, but unless you have a solid base, um, you know, score isn't going to, score is always going to fluctuate unless you build that solid base. So, um, just a couple of things on, on the, uh, social, emotional, academic, um, as far as equity goes. Um, you know, I love what we're doing with equal opportunity schools, um, but the most important thing to me has always been the, that support system. You know, I, I think when we first talked about EOS, I kept saying, I kept talking about supports because, you know, I talked to parents out in the community, I say, yeah, your kid will get rigor in our school district, but the biggest lesson I taught my kids was to be an advocate for themselves and to take accountability. And when you put those supports in place, yes, you're trying to help the struggling academic students. Um, and that can be many different things. It could be me and the academic achievement gap, but it also could mean that socioeconomic student, which we know by research has the biggest negative impact on academic success because there aren't the resources there that the, the parents have. So I'm excited what we're doing, uh, and continuing to do with supports. Um, on the social and emotional side of that, mentorship is so important and I'd love us to even have a conversation about that someday because I know we're even doing so much more than was even mentioned here today. Uh, I love what we're doing with Boys to Men. Uh, I would like to see that mentorship continue throughout our district, and I know there is different areas of it happening, but, you know, from that high school to middle school level, from that middle school level to the elementary school level, because I think we know that hiring teachers of, uh, to represent our student population is, is always going to be tough and it's only going to continue to get tougher. So when students can look to other students to, to hear them and, and, and to get mentorship from them, um, I think it's so important and I, and I hope we continue to find unique and different ways of doing that. Uh, thank you Doug and Jen for the continuous support and new things that we're doing on equity and hiring and retaining staff especially. Um, you know, I, I've had conversations with state, state board of education members and previous, um, education directors in our state. And fact of the matter is they still think of Indian Prairie as this 90% white school district. Um, you know, I, I don't know how much we're getting the word out there that we are a very diverse school district, um, because I don't think, a lot of people think of that when they, when they hear Indian Prairie. So, um, you know, maybe that front message too, you know, how we're a, a very, um, diverse district, uh, might be a good thing and might draw candidates towards us, uh, when it comes to hiring. And then, um, I love what we're doing in the community. Um, and I think about, the wonderful thing about that is there are so many opportunities and, and we all know how kids that are pursuing the college path, they have to get all those volunteer hours in, right? They have to do all that volunteering stuff. So I think the more that we can expose different volunteer opportunities, especially to our students of different backgrounds, um, to get them involved in some of that stuff by some of the things we've been doing, that's wonderful. So I just wanted to compliment you on those things. Thanks.
Ms. Grover?
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I appreciate how you thought of the staff, the teachers, as well as the students. And, um, you know, I was, I had an opportunity to go to the libraries and see the books on different cultures and different languages. And so I think it's really helpful when kids see that. Um, one of the questions I have is the culturally, culturally responsive teaching workshops, are those for teachers who volunteer to do those workshops or are they for every teacher?
Well, right now, we started with our Title I buildings and so we connected with the building leadership, um, let them, we presented them with the outline and our goal. Um, sometimes when you have opportunities after school, the same types of people who want to develop their skills will show up. And so we wanted to have more options during the workday, so that's a commitment that we've made here, um, allowing teachers to have some release time. So those building leaders were able to look at their staff and see who they thought would really benefit. Um, so I liked that some of them picked a person who was very strong and would be able to come back and be a, a big champion. And then maybe someone else that needed to be pulled along a little bit more and surrounded by that community. Uh, we had about 22, um, teachers that came and it's a four-part workshop. We're meeting each month, so they have homework and things, uh, and everyone left with a sense of community. And again, you could see other people being engaged and pulled into that. And then other people who were really involved in that work, um, felt rejuvenated. So I think it's a great process again, and, uh, and again, making those connections with other colleagues in other buildings. So that's where we're starting and, um, then we'll be able to replicate that and get another core of people to go through. And they'll be able to go into their buildings and, um, expand and share that knowledge. I hope that answered your question.
It does.
Okay.
And they've centered, centered it around a book, um, that can also be shared with colleagues. And so it was very wise of them to take a, a text so that it can be duplicated in that way and they can, a teacher can take it back to their building and have others read as well and have conversations.
The, you know, we partner with COD and we have the Technology Center and we have early childhood as one of the classes that the kids can take, but we see very few enrollment in students taking that. How would, is there something we could do to, how do we increase the students who take that? And does that lead into teaching our students who take that course?
Um, well, we're definitely trying to look at how can we increase more students to want to be interested in becoming teachers. Um, it's one of the reasons that we're trying to, um, move forward with looking at growing your own. Um, that definitely the high school teachers like, um, those classes. Those are much more popular when they're working with the early childhood students. Are much more popular than like beginning education and education when those courses. Um, and so I would say many of them that do that are interested in possibly becoming teachers, but not all of them. Did I answer your question there?
Yeah. Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how we can work with the university so that you're kind of done with your prereqs, I guess. And so it would just be easier to.
That's the exact conversation that when Kathy and I went to Lewis University, um, one of the questions that we brought up at that time was, all right, help us, what we really need to do to be able to communicate with students is if they take these dual credit courses, what classes do they not take with you so that they get done earlier? Thus, they're paying less money. Um, and, um, at that point in time, um, you know, they, uh, wanted to follow up and get back with us on what would that look like? Because we don't really have a set answer. How does this reduce the amount of time you're going there? Um, and many of our students also, um, are still, you know, they want to make sure they get into the college that they want to go to, so they're trying to take honors classes and AP classes, which sometimes can also limit them from taking, um, some of those education classes that might not be honors or advanced placement. And they are worried about how is that going to affect their application to the college or university that they go to? So these are different challenges. A lot of our conversations with the universities are, you know, we're in this together, how do we make it more affordable, um, for students? And part of that is, is this dual credit class going to reduce the amount of courses they have to take when they get to the university college? We don't have a great answer to that yet, but we keep pressing, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm impressed by the dynamic nature of the equity work. And I think we all need this kind of reflect here, it's necessary. I think Jen Rowe, you can have a job from now until you're 95.
Unfortunately.
And maybe unfortunately and maybe fortunately, the district, and we do, has to recognize that because of its diversity, we have to have ongoing conversation. We try to be perfect. We want to be perfect. But we have to recognize that along the way, there's going to be bumps. But we have to be brave enough to say we made a mistake. And we have to be brave enough to have conversations and try to make things better for our students overall. So I really appreciate the dynamic nature of the work. And you began the presentation by saying, this is an ongoing conversation and it needs to be ongoing. We need to recognize that if we're going to meet our mission statement, which is, you know, to inspire all, all students, that we have to have these conversations. And sometimes they're not pleasant and sometimes they're a little difficult. Couple of questions. Uh, the district equity leadership team, I know last year, um, they worked on an equity plan, which was really systemic. And we kind of address more episodic kinds of programs like Boys to Men. Can you just reflect some people have a good idea of the systemic nature of the district equity leadership team and the systemic work that's going across all schools, just not some?
Well, that's, um, you know, as we made the shift from having it in those four areas of leadership, teaching and learning, community engagement and professional learning, we've also made the shift in how we organize the plan. So the plan will, is our work right now is, uh, the plan is organized based on the district goal and what are the, uh, activities, uh, initiatives that we're doing to achieve those district goals. And so when you talk about the systemic approach, you know, we've highlighted some things here that look at, uh, reading across all levels. We've looked at culturally responsive teaching that will go systemically across all levels. Um, and, you know, the hiring, things like that. So I think as we work to develop that and make that transition from the format we had before to this, which we'll share with you, I think you'll see the systemic approach. We highlighted for you tonight, for instance, reading, the work that's been done so far has mainly been at the middle school level, but then that carries out, um, across all levels. So I think you'll see that as we create that, um, plan for you. But some of the things that we've done in the past, we're looking at opportunities, you know, talking about, um, free preschool for students who can't afford it. We looked at, um, you know, our leadership strands and what types of, uh, professional learning do all of our leaders need? Uh, what types of professional learning do all of our teachers need? What do some need? And then what do some really want to dig into? And we'll continue to have that focus when you look at professional learning, but it will be based on what those, how we support the district goals. So we're in the process of making that transition as a Delt team.
And I know that it takes time, but we need to keep on focused with that. Really interested in the student and graduate conversations you've been having. What are we doing well? And what are they telling us we got to do a little bit better on?
They are very open.
Yeah.
They're, it's, it's been, I don't, I can only speak for myself, but, um, you know, that's one great thing. Jennifer has connections and so she's been able to bring in some graduates and have us talk with them. And I've just been so proud of, um, their openness and the way that they want to give back. Um, we haven't had many that have left saying, you know, just tell me what you need me to do and I'd like to come back and help. So, um, but we don't have a formal survey, but we've enjoyed the conversation.
We have enjoyed the conversation.
What are they telling you though? Come on, you can give me something here. What, what are we doing well? What are they happy with and?
I think, um, every one of them has had a relationship with a staff member that they have found to be very beneficial. So whether it was, um, it doesn't matter who, who it was, if they had questions, that's who they went to. So that relationship building was reinforced for us and it doesn't have to mean that they have to have a relationship with everybody they encounter, but they've all benefited from having one or two people that were their go-to people that they felt safe and secure. that they felt safe and secure in talking to them. I think that's been a common strand I've seen.
I think so as well.
Okay, let's off the hook here a little bit. With the culturally responsive stuff, one of it is with the books and trying to get more books and more materials in. The other is curriculum.
Yes.
When I went to Dr. Howard's presentation, I heard parents talk about trying to include different history into our curriculum. When I was a principal, someone asked me to look at our history book in the middle school and to count how many women were included in the 367-page book. Besides Betsy Ross, there were two other women in almost a 400-page book. And now we have different constituency, different ethnic groups. What do we do to evaluate our curriculum? And maybe start, and maybe this is a new discussion, expanding so that people can see themselves in the history and in literature. So how can we do that? And are you taking steps? Are you hearing the same things?
Well, we heard the same thing from Dr. Howard when he spoke to staff during the day. But you know, the one reason why we're so excited about our social studies curriculum is because it really does open the door to open the door. It is not, there's not a social studies book where you learn the facts and the sequential history. It's really that compelling question. And then helping students find the answers and directing them towards other resources other than just an encyclopedia or something like that. Finding that and curating those resources. Our social studies teams have done a lot of work to curate resources so that teachers can have things at their materials so that students can learn more about other aspects of history and use women, people of color, LGBTQ plus, use other historical figures to bring that social studies compelling question alive and to gain some answers.
And then I think the piece that I wanted to share with that is, again, building those relationships and being able to work collaboratively. So my colleague Tara Fowler, for example, was able to invite me in to have a conversation with those teachers. And through that dialogue, really shifted the perspective that they had and the direction that they were taking the work that they were doing. So that was very important. Again, me having a relationship with her, her willingness to collaborate. And then those teachers, their openness to hear a different perspective. So a lot of great work is going on. And again, that's going to continue to be ongoing. And again, like our course offerings that we have, you know, what classes, what things do we feel are valuable? You know, I know we've changed to where we're moving with our African-American literature class. That's going to be a blended course, which, you know, 14 years ago, you know, I submitted a proposal three times and we weren't there yet. So again, we're starting to shift that perspective and allowing more voices to be heard.
Last but not least, I love our community involvement. Because we can go bad here, even the board can go bad and say, it's your responsibility to take care of equity. And that would be like a real mistake. Because it's all our responsibility to take care of equity. The board has responsibility to keep the work in the forefront. The administration has to work and continue to work with this. But also, it's like our P3 groups, our PDAC groups, they're active groups. I know they continually look for additional members and additional input. Even working through PTSA groups, there's a variety of places where people can work as parents, as community members, as students, to work on this together. So I'm hoping that as a district, that's what we do. That's my charge to everyone, is to work together through this. Because if we start pointing fingers at each other, it's not, we're wasting time. So we need to continue to listen to each other. We need to continue to work with each other in order to make sure that we serve our kids in the best way possible. So thanks for everything you do. Any last comments? Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Superintendent search update. Holy cow. We're going to be busy. To the community, we're still on target. I think at the latest, in our January, we're still on target to name a superintendent by January. That's going to mean a lot of work. We've been given a list of candidates. We'll be sorting through those candidates to determine who we're going to interview. We'll interview some of them and also have finalist interviews. And that's all within the next month or so. So we'll be spending a lot of quality time with each other. And I'm sure we're all looking forward to that. Actually, we are. Legislative advocacy update, I'm going to be, let Mr. Rising begin with that.
Yeah, I mean, just a quick comment, just based on our last meeting where we discussed the resolutions that will be discussed at the delegate assembly this Saturday. I'm sure we want to make a comment on one of the resolutions for sure. So if you want me to incorporate some of your things, I know Lori has some stuff that she'll get me. But if you want to get me some things you'd like me to work into a statement, remember I only have five minutes, but I can talk fast. Just give me that stuff and I'll put it together and show you a copy before Saturday. I can't promise you when, but the sooner you can get me stuff, the better. But probably come Thursday, if I don't get something from you, I'll just do it with what I have. Okay? Thanks. That's all I have from that.
The only thing I have with the legislative update is the veto session, I think is now over. There wasn't significant legislation. The one piece of legislation that Dr. Sullivan and I talked about was for our teacher assistance. There was a more stringent criteria put on teacher assistance that they needed two years of college. And there was a test, they took the test away. Four people who did not have that two years, but was they, they were able to pass the test and then work for us. So they took that opportunity for people who did not have college away. By accident, as they were writing the law. And as a result of that...
Some people forget about resolutions.
It made hiring teacher assistants much more difficult. They reinstated that, so we're in a good place. So that's better. Board of Education update, two things. I really want to thank the community. Believe it or not, we don't get a lot of thank yous from the community. But we did within the last week for, it was School Board Recognition Week. And actually, this is one of the first times in my seven years where community members were thanking us for the work we did. Some of our schools are giving us prizes.
And this is not a desperate plea for more presents next year.
No, no, no. We don't. I just want to say, it's appreciated. On behalf of everyone here, a lot of time and a lot of volunteer hours do go into being a board member. I appreciate everybody here on the dais for all the work that they do. And we don't really need a thank you, to tell you the truth. The work itself is very satisfying, but it's kind of nice to get one every once in a while. So thanks for the thanks. I know you're not supposed to do that, but I'm doing it anyway. Dr. Sullivan talked about the triple I conference, in which we're going to participate this week. It's just a great opportunity. And it's important. We're in charge of about a $350 million budget, believe it or not. There's not like school to how to be a board member. It's kind of learn as you go. But the conference provides an opportunity for everyone to learn their craft. They have other board members there. They have experts there. And it assists us to be better board members and better servants of the community. So we really do appreciate the opportunity. All seven of us will be participating. We have a history of all seven of us participating. And I think it is a good use of money and it's a good use of our time in order that we can better serve the community. So thanks for the opportunity. Anything else for the good of the group?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yes.